Having some transportation updates and then the agenda briefing. So it should be a shorter day than our recent eight-hour days of budget workshops. But, Lourdes, it's in your hands.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. And just like you said, Commissioner Eggers, this morning's agenda, we have transportation updates on projects. And Kelly Levy is going to come up and introduce her team.
Thank you. Morning, Kelly.
Good morning. And just want to say again, happy birthday to Commissioner Eggers.
Thank you.
We celebrated yesterday. So with that, I'd like to introduce my team. We have a couple of speakers, but we also have Mona Gabriel, who's our Capital Improvements Division Director. I know normally, pre-COVID, you know, we would more get them here, but with limitations. But I was glad she could be here. Mona's been with us for several months now. She joined us from the Virginia Department of Transportation. Of course, we have Tom Washburn, who you're all very well familiar with, but he is now our new Division Director over the Transportation Division. He succeeded Ken Jacobs. So it's very good to have that continuity in the Transportation Program.
Kelly, hold on one second. I apologize. First of all, Commissioner Flowers and Commissioner Peters are running a little bit late. And as normal, when we have somebody participating, even though it's a workshop, we've suggested, or the attorney suggested, that we vote to allow Commissioner Seal, who's home sick today, to participate. So do I have a motion to allow that?
No approval.
Thank you. A second by Commissioner Gerard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry about that. Commissioner Seal, you are eligible to participate.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I don't want to pass.
Good morning, Commissioner Seal. Glad that you're here with us as well. So with that, I'm going to turn over the mic to our two speakers this morning. First is going to be Erin Lawson. Erin is a professional engineer in the Capital Improvements Division, leading our Transportation Section. And following her presentation on the 22nd Avenue Complete Streets update, Joan Rice is going to join, join us up here at the podium. Joan is also a professional engineer, and she works in the Transportation Division, doing a lot of our planning efforts. And she's going to give an update on the State Road 60 Belcher efforts that you heard about last year. And she's also going to give you an update on the Trail Visioning that was just completed, and the South Gap efforts that we're moving forward with.
And happy birthday, Commissioner Eggers.
Thank you.
My daughter also celebrated a birthday yesterday.
Oh, very nice.
Yes. Well, I'm going to start off this morning by giving you an update on 22nd Avenue South As you may know, 22nd Avenue is a minor arterial. It spans from Gulfport to St. Pete, and it connects to I-275. We have completed a robust Complete Streets study and analysis from the 58th Street South to 34th Street South, with coordination from both cities, as well as representation from Thurgood Marshall Middle School. The recommendation, based on all this input, is to leave the lane numbers and widths as is, and construct pedestrian and intersection improvements in two phases. The first phase includes filling in sidewalk gaps on the south side of the road, and constructing an eight-foot-wide sidewalk on the north side. Right-of-way easements, I'm sorry, right-of-way or easements have been obtained on the north side in all but just a couple of locations. Where these rights have not yet been obtained, signage and crossing markings will be installed to provide access to the sidewalk on the south side, in order to construct a fully accessible route along the entire corridor. During Phase 1, the roadway will also be widened to incorporate an eastbound left-turn lane at Thurgood Marshall Middle School. A median with pedestrian refuge will also be accessible at the Skyway Trail Crossing. And finally, milling and resurfacing will occur along the roadway in Phase 1. Our second phase includes upgrading the existing span wire signals to mast arms, and installing street lighting and pedestrian improvements at all of the signalized intersections. Any gaps in the north side eight-foot sidewalk will also be filled, should we be able to obtain additional right-of-way. This is an exhibit of what that widening is going to look like at the school entrance. We have an arrow view, along with the schematic showing the pavement markings. We have highlighted the Skyway Trail and the school entrance.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Long.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but going back to the previous slide, where it talked about 58th Street South to 34th Street South, you talked about that in terms of two phases, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have dates for when Phase 2 will begin, and dates when Phase 1 will begin?
I sure do, yes. And if you give me just a moment, we'll get to it.
Well, okay then. Thank you.
No problem. So the existing Skyway Trail Crossing will be reconstructed as part of the roadway widening, which will provide an eastbound left-turn lane into the middle school. The addition of the turn lane will significantly help with congestion on 22nd Avenue South, along with improving the circulation at the school for morning drop-offs and afternoon pickups. So now we'll talk about the schedule just a little bit. We are currently in the 100% design phase of Phase 1. So we anticipate going to construction with Phase 1 this winter, so looking at, you know, end of 2021 or beginning of 2022. Before we go to construction, we're going to send out some public notifications in the fall. These notifications are going to be mailings to everybody within the area, to give them the website that we have listed down at the bottom. That webpage will be kept up to date, to give all the current information, and to let them know what the schedule is going to look like for construction. And then for Phase 2, we anticipate the design starting with our consultant later this month, so that we can complete the design in March of next year. We anticipate construction in October of 2022. So that actually concludes the update I've got on 22nd. Do you have any additional questions?
Yeah, I just had a couple. Go ahead, Sean.
Okay, so you gave us the potential dates when it would start, but you never mentioned when you expect to have the whole thing completed. I know Commissioner Welch will be incredibly interested in that.
Right. So Phase 2, which I said is going to be the intersection improvements, and also, should we get any additional easements, will also include the gaps in that eight-foot sidewalk. If we're able to start construction in October of next year, I would anticipate about a year and a half of construction.
Thank you.
How much, what's the estimated length of area that we won't have a sidewalk? I'm assuming this is on the north side?
Correct.
What, how much sidewalk are we missing?
It's going to be about a block. There's about a block where we won't be able to have any sidewalk. And this is due to the fact that we have, we don't have any right-of-way beyond the edge of pavement.
Commissioner Flowers, did you have a question on that? No, I just, and there's no, obviously, we're constrained on the south side as well, on the south side of the road. There's no movement either way, in terms of expansion, right-of-way.
Oh, you mean if we were to like shift the...
But we don't have room on the north side.
There will be sidewalk on the south side.
Okay.
Just those little gaps on the north side, where we're trying to put a fully connected eight-foot sidewalk.
Okay. And how long is that turn lane? I couldn't read the design there. Is it a...
Let's see. That turn lane, let me see if I can...
How many cars estimated to be able to queue into that? Is it a two-lane or one-lane?
It's a single lane. So, you know, I don't have a scale on this, and it's...
I just couldn't see them.
I think you're probably going to be able to fit about 10...
It's about 350 feet. What was that?
350 feet. So we're going to be able to fit, you know, queue up...
30?
20 cars.
20 cars.
15, 20.
Okay, all right. Yes, Commissioner Long.
I'm sorry, but I have to ask this question, because this is my ninth year now on the Pinellas County Commission, and not one year has gone by when we have not talked about getting this done. And so I find it remarkable that there are any gaps in being able to complete the entire thing. And I guess it begs me to inquire, is there a specific reason why we've been unable to get those particular right-of-ways that give us a block? And all this work that we won't be able to do, that seems a little silly to me.
We work with our right-of-way, with our Real Estate Management Division there. They assist us with the acquisition of any property or any rights that we need. And unfortunately, they have been working very diligently, along with the project managers, to try to close those gaps. But the property owners are not willing to provide those rights.
Go ahead, Commissioner Flowers.
Can you turn your mic on, please?
I'm sorry. Those are homes along that stretch, on the north side, and on the, as well as on the south side. Prior to that is the Lakeview Shopping Center. And then after the block of homes, it's the Twinbrooks Golf Course on the south side. And if you travel that right now, the two lanes, well, the four lanes totaled that are there, it's very tight. You all see the traffic as, it's super tight. And if you take up, if you get any additional right-of-way for those homeowners, they will have no front yard. It is, it is nominal, because there were some improvements there done not too long ago. And it, there's just no more space. And they're not willing to, they gave up a lot when the school was built, and they're just not willing to give up any more of their personal property. But if you ever get a chance to drive down there, you'll see what I'm talking about. It is so tight. Sometimes when you drive, it makes you wonder if the cars are going to, like, maybe hit each other, because they're touching so close in the lanes. And that's even with the appropriate room that they have now for the two lanes. So that's what I was going to share, but good question, as it relates to that.
Thank you, because while I do drive up and down that road a lot, I certainly don't have it memorized in terms of what the different blocks are.
And it is the same on the south side? There's no additional room there either? Is that...
No, the south side, we will be able to complete the sidewalk.
Okay.
So it's just, we're having a little bit of problem on the north side. Several property owners were, worked with us very well, and we were able to get those easements or right-of-ways. And, you know, we're still hopeful that maybe we can work with some of them to get this filled in. But it's, you know, it is their property.
Where is it located on that, on 22nd? The gap I'm talking about?
Okay, so, let's see.
And that's the side, the school's on the north side?
Correct. Yeah, so if I remember correctly, it's going to be kind of in this area right here, is where the properties are that we don't have the right-of-way.
I don't have the, I haven't, Commissioner Flowers, I haven't driven that road often. So it just, we're just trying to picture, you know, people going on the sidewalk on that side to school, and then they get to that block. What's their options at that point? Is there a way to get them to the south side, and then continue the walk? Or how do they, how do they move?
Right, yes, there will be. And there's also at the school is that crossing where the Skyway Trail is. And so that's going to be one of the main ways to get from north to south, south to north. But we also have at, there's several signalized intersections along the corridor. And so at each of those signalized intersections, there's going to be pedestrian crossing.
Does that mean also a school guard crossing to get kids to school there? I mean, when they're going to school in the morning?
There are crossing guards. I'm not sure exactly what locations they are. You need that, the school works with the sheriff in order to place those guards at the right locations.
But that bridge that you're talking about, that crossing bridge there, is that, is the gap to the east of that? Is that where the gap is?
It is to the west, actually.
To the west. So, again, you're trying to get to the school. How do you cross to the south side to continue your walk to that bridge? How do you... I'm just trying to think, I'm trying to envision...
You probably would just go through the person's yard.
Go through the person's, okay. Yeah, Commissioner Flowers, go ahead.
Also, not many neighborhood students go to this school. Thurgood Marshall is a 100% full-time gifted and fundamental school, and you have to submit an application to get in for placement. So a great number of the students that attend this school are not walkers.
Okay.
They are riders. You know, parents bring them.
Okay, so it's not, I got you.
Yeah, parents bring them, or a bus.
Yes, because it's inside the two-mile radius, so there would normally be a lot of walkers.
It would have, if it was not a fundamental and gifted program. So you don't have as many walkers.
But there will be ways, I guess, other than walking on people's yards.
And that's what they do now.
That's what they do, okay.
Right, yeah, there are cow paths, you can see through those properties. But we did, like, we did meet with the school board, and that's kind of what stemmed this left-turn lane, is, you know, hearing that there aren't a lot of walkers, mostly just commuters, so their parents dropping off and picking up.
Okay. Any other, yeah, Commissioner Flowers, sorry, Commissioner Peters.
No, no, no problem. So have you all walked, worked out traffic patterns? Because 22nd Avenue is a huge traffic corridor. When persons are getting off of I-275 to go to work in Gulfport or Pasadena or wherever, and then back and forth, you know, back. So have you all worked out how that traffic will maneuver around during this construction phase? Because that's going to be a lot of traffic to detour. And even if, no matter which neighborhood you detour through, there's going to be a lot of cars going through, so...
Correct, yes. We will have a traffic control plan in place, and the lane closures will only be allowed when traffic volumes are low enough, so that we're not causing major congestion. And the majority of this work is going to be outside of the roadway, except for, you know, as you can see here, the widening. But there will be a plan in place. There should not be any need for a detour.
And just want to say thank you, Commissioner Long, because, yes, the commission has been working on this a long time. And I know Commissioner Welch, like you said, was very interested in moving this project along. The only other good thing I would say is, if we are able to kind of speed it up, that would be wonderful. You know, I know it takes time and permitting and all of that, but if there's any way we could speed it up, that would be absolutely fabulous.
Speeding up the project, not the traffic.
Yes, yeah. Correct, correct. Speeding up the project, yes, sir.
Commissioner Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear, because it is so tight, I don't, I don't drive it, because it's, I swear, there are accidents that have got to be high on that street, because it is so tight and so compact. So I see on the one stretch, it's going to 11 feet. Is that 10 feet? Is that an expansion? Or was, is it already a 10 feet?
It is currently 10 feet. So like you see, there is an 11-foot section with 11-foot lanes, and there's the section in St. Pete with the 10-foot lanes.
And so there's no way to make that wider than the 10 feet?
There, you know, there were options that we looked at. We've gone through several phases of studies, and most recently, the Complete Streets analysis. And working with both cities, we had different ideas coming from both directions, and this was, this is what both cities decided they could both live with.
Wow. So anytime that someone wants to make a left lane that isn't on a main road, there's no left-turn lane there. And I can't tell you how many times that I've been on that road, that people are slamming on the brakes, or swerving around, because they have to stop traffic on a very voluminous road. And so I'm disappointed that there isn't a left-turn lane, that there isn't a fifth lane for left turns, to prevent some of those accidents. And it's because of that, I don't use that road. I don't get off at that exit. I'd rather take a longer way around. But that 10-foot really concerns me. And, you know, as people swerve around, that doesn't make them safer on a sidewalk, you know, even if there is a sidewalk. So I'm disappointed there isn't a left-turn lane there. Or at least a wider street. That 10 feet, it's so tight and compact, that worries me as well.
Yeah, I completely understand. And we realize that, you know, speeding is a problem. And having those narrow lanes does help keep the speeding down a little bit, just because you do feel that closeness while you're driving. And while we were doing the design for the sidewalk, the ultimate goal was to keep the sidewalk as far away from the roadway as possible.
I think, when I think about looking at that street, I kind of, I see Drew Street just a little bit, in that we have narrow lanes. And so the, I don't think the narrow lanes there slow the traffic down. In fact, sometimes I, I know that we've been trying to slow the traffic down. What is the speed limit supposed to be here? Do we know?
I believe the majority of this is 45. There's a segment that's also 40. So it goes from 40 to 45.
Yeah. I mean, I think Commissioner Peters raised a good point. I mean, you, the narrowness of the lanes, I don't think dictates the traffic, because I've sat on Drew Street and watched those narrow lanes, and people, they act like, I mean, they're this far from a car traveling in opposite directions, and, eh, they're probably doing all kinds of things in their car. They're not even worried about it, still busting down there probably 50 miles an hour. So that's a big concern, obviously, for this. But we are ultimately constrained by the right-of-way. So we either give up the sidewalk, which we're not going to do. I just don't know what alternatives. What other alternatives were you looking at that...
We did look at a lane, a road diet. So we looked at a three-lane section. We looked at widening to put 12-foot lanes throughout the whole corridor. And, you know, we had one city preferred one versus the other preferred another, and we just said, this is, this is the best we can do to get this job done.
So, yeah, okay, all right. Okey-dokey. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. I'm going to pass this over to Joan.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Hi, Joan. Good morning.
Hi. I'm going to give you a project update on Belcher Road at Gulf Bay Boulevard, that's State Road 60, Intersection Improvement Project. A presentation on the project development and environmental PD&amp;E study was presented to you on July the 16th, 2020. As discussed, the study's focus is to identify intersection improvements to address the existing operational and safety issues. The existing intersection is experiencing significant queuing and delay, as well as many crashes. The project includes the signalized intersection of Belcher Road, a county road, and State Road 60, owned by Florida Department of Transportation, located within the city of Clearwater. Also included in the study is the signalized intersection at the Walmart and Publix driveway, due to its proximity 600 feet to the south. The purpose of the PD&amp;E study is to determine what alternatives could be built, and what are the impacts to each. We look at possible impacts to things like wetlands, historic sites, community impacts, and safety. Public input is one of the factors that is considered in the process for selection of the preferred alternative. Several intersection study alternatives were identified for evaluation. The four alternatives that are currently under consideration include a no-build alternative, an expanded traffic signal alternative, that's where additional right and left-turn lanes are added, a signal, single-point urban interchange alternative, where State Road 60 will go over Belcher Road, and a median U-turn alternative, where the left-turn movements are moved to the east and to the west of the intersection. Last year, we presented this last alternative to the board, along with a video on how the median U-turn works. The video is now on... The video is now on the project website. That's at www.pennelscounty.org/belcher60. We presented this project to Ford Pennels Board, the Board of County Commission, the City of Clearwater, and the public at a virtual information meeting. That public meeting had 88 registered individuals with 48 attending, and they had 51 questions. Information from the meeting, as well as the recording, is on the project website. This evaluation matrix shows a comparison of the right-of-way impacts, the community effects, contaminated site impacts, safety improvements, traffic operations, and costs for the alternative studied. Public feedback is part of the PD&amp;E process, but that alone is not the determining factor of the preferred alternative. It is just a component of the decision-making. Eight percent liked the no-build alternative, where only the signal upgrades may happen. Thirty-five percent were in favor of the expanded traffic signal alternative, with adding right and left turn lanes. This alternative would close the signalized intersection at the Walmart and Publix driveways. Forty-one percent were in favor of the single-point urban interchange, or the overpass option, especially being familiar with the US-19 and State Road 60. This one cost the most to construct and has the most right-of-way impacts. Seventeen percent were in favor of the median U-turn alternative, but many expressed concerns that drivers would not know how to navigate it. The next steps will be to develop a staff recommendation on the preferred alternative based on feedback from the community, FDOT, the City of Clearwater, and Ford Pennels. A preferred alternative will be brought back to the board for consideration. The preferred alternative will then be brought to the public at a public hearing before the PD&amp;E is completed in the spring of 2022. Design could happen as early as fiscal year 2223, acquisition in 2324, and construction in 2526. More information for the project can be found on the project website. That concludes my report on the Belcher at State Road 60. Does anybody have questions?
Um, yeah, I do. Commissioner Justice, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The, and, and we talked, I think, a little bit like last time when you all presented, but what is it about this intersection that has, is there something about the driver behavior? Is there something about the current design that seems to make this have more problems than other intersections that are similar or larger in size?
It's, well, State Road 60 has so much traffic on it going east and west, and Belcher is such a major roadway, that there's just so much going on, so many turning movements happening. And every phase of the signal takes time. So everyone else has to wait while you're waiting for the next phase to go. So it's, it's everybody converging in one area and having to wait their turn to get through.
Yeah, it just seems that there's other intersections that are, or have all those same elements that you just described, that don't seem to have the, the tragic end results that this intersection has had over the years. Or maybe it's anecdotal, and the stats don't back that up, but it certainly seems that we've been focusing a lot of attention on this intersection. And when we talk about overpasses, I've always been curious, and someone actually brought this up to me when we were in, in Tarpon Springs yesterday, is why is, why do we always do the overpass on the main corridor going east to west on Gulf Bay, rather than a smaller one, maybe north to south over from, on Belcher, going north to south? Does that consideration, that, that conversation ever happen?
Oh, yes, it does, it does. It all has to do with the, the access on the side, along the roadway, where you're going to have less direct access, because you have to have that elevation difference. So if you have the overpass going over State Road 60, just think that you have to have your ramp down far enough that you probably have it extended beyond Drew Street, or Drew Street, or Drew Street north, but, I mean, to Druid, to the south.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, when we did that, was it last year that you showed us the U-turn round? I showed it to a couple firefighters, and their dismay, they, they feel like the, the citizens felt that this would, people would have a very difficult time navigating that, and they feel that their call volume would go up significantly. And, you know, I don't know if we ever talked to the firefighters. We talked to the citizens, but do we, do we ever talk to the firefighters? Because they're the ones that are the first responders at many of these things, and they, they see what happens at every one of these accidents in these intersections. I mean, even on 22nd Avenue South, I, you know, I'm in dismay that we're not widening that or putting left turns in there. But do we ever talk to them or look at the, I mean, I know you're looking at accident data to make the determination that you're doing that there. But, you know, the response when I showed them that U-turn thing was not positive in any way whatsoever.
Thank you very much, and, and I will make sure that we talk with our emergency responders, firefighters, the sheriff. I do not know if that has happened yet, but we will ensure. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
When you expanding the turn lanes, that was, I think that's option, is that two?
Two.
Why are you having to shut down the Walmart light?
Okay. The, the reason why is in order to get the extra turn lanes and have the depth needed for queuing the vehicles up, we need to expand that to the south, and it actually will close the median opening there at the driveway of Publix and Walmart, so that we can have enough queue area so that we can get cars to make that left turn.
So you're essentially closing the access, you're not, you're not only closing the intersection or the light, the light at intersection, you're not allowing any entrance to those?
It would be a right-in, right-out only, for both the Walmart and the Publix.
Okay, so they would still be allowed?
You would still have access in and out, but you would have to plan your route. If you currently make a left out, you wouldn't be able to in the future with that alternative.
So the alternative is to have a certain length of a turn lane?
Yes.
The shorter turn lane wouldn't be, wouldn't be acceptable, you know? It seemed to me that you could add 300, you said it's 600 feet away.
Yes, it is.
You could add 300 feet of turn lane and make a big difference.
Yes.
And again, I'm, it's a non-engineering observation.
That's fine.
Instead of having to do 900 feet or 800 feet.
It, it has to do with the design year and the protect, the projected amount of traffic that's planned that needs to make that left turn. The consultant figured out how many in one light cycle would need to make that left turn.
Right, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the right turn.
Well, for the right turn?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're, we're closing off, I'm talking about the approach, the right lane, the right turn lane, as you're going north on Belcher, onto State Road 60. You're closing down, you're taking that light away at Walmart on, on Belcher, right?
Yes, but the right, the right turn lane for northbound would, is not the deciding factor for closing the intersection. It's the left turn.
The left turn?
The left turn, you have to build that median back to the south.
Okay. How, how, how much, we have a turn lane there now.
Yes, and I don't know, I don't know, I, I can get you that information.
Well, I'm just curious what the dimensions are there, and again, sum is better than nothing.
Correct.
So I'm just trying to figure out ways to do sum as opposed to everything, and closing a light there that makes a big difference to those businesses and people that go to those businesses, so.
Most definitely.
Okay. And then on the median U-turns, which I think, you know, if people get, you know, their minds boggled with roundabouts, these things really throw people for a loop. I worry about these things on a, a road that's traveled like that. So when you're talking about making those U-turns, you're stopping, you have to have a, an area, a time, I guess, between cars to, to allow that turn to happen. Does that slow the overall traffic down, east and west, when you do something like that?
In order to make the U-turn, if you're going like northbound on Belcher, you have to get into that right turn lane. You do have to wait in that right turn lane until either, A, there's an opening in the gap of traffic going east and west, or the signal turns green for you, and then you'd be able to get across and make that U-turn.
Yeah, because you're going to have to go right and then get over in the left lane.
Correct, correct. So you have to get in the right turn lane, you have to wait for a gap enough to get all the way over to the median, median U-turn, which is down a little ways, but you still have to get all the way across.
And then the traffic going westbound on that, on State Road 60, there has to be a point of stopping the traffic so that these turn, the folks that are making the U-turn can actually do that.
Yes. At the U-turn itself, there will be a signal to stop the traffic in the other direction. It'll be timed with the signal at, at State Road 60 and Belcher, so that you, you don't want to have to stop at two signals. They would be timed together.
And the only final thing I'd say is on that, it sounds like it's really low on the preferred options, but is there anywhere that we've seen this in action, that's on a similar type busy road, like State Road?
Not, not in the state of Florida. They do have this in other states, often called the Michigan U-turn. So I think the closest one that's very similar to this, I think it was up in North Carolina. And we even have that on their website, too, so that you can actually go and take a look at something that's already been built.
And do you have, do they have traffic counts for those roads versus the traffic counts for our roads?
No, but we can get that.
I think it'd be good. I mean, it'd be just, we could be talking apples and oranges, or the, or the same.
True.
So, okay. Any other questions on, so we'll be hearing much more about this to come.
Oh, much more.
Yeah?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next topic is the trail visioning. We've been working on this trail visioning project for the last year, and today I'm going to tell you a little bit about it. With the celebration of the 30th anniversary of the Pennels Trail, it's time to think about the next 30 years. Just last year, there were over 2 million people that used the Pennels Trail, both residents and visitors. The trail visioning project objective is to create a visioning document that meets the current and future needs of the trail's stakeholders. The document is currently in draft form and out to the stakeholders for their review. To move forward, we had to understand the past, why things were done, and how far we've come. We went to all of our stakeholders, including parks, public works, all the municipalities that the trail goes through, the Friends of the Pennels Trail, Inc., as well as the public, and asked them what they would like and what they would like to see in the next 30 years. The document also covers maintenance, design standards, signage, amenities, and safety. With the COVID-19 requirements, we chose, we chose to do an online public survey this past January and February. Outreach for the survey went out through our stakeholders, social media, Pennels County websites, local businesses put up signs in their windows, and we had variable message boards out on the trail. And then we handed out cards with a QR code on them to link you directly to the survey. We had over 2,000 participants that answered 19 questions. Here are a few of the things they told us. The top two amenities they would like to see more of are restrooms and hydration stations. They would like to see more signage, like mile markers, maps, and wayfinding. Seventy-eight percent said they would use a trail app on their phone, and they would use the trail more if there were safer crossings, local trail connections, and lighting. Next steps for the trail visioning document is to incorporate the comments from the stakeholder review, and finalize the report, which will be in the July 2021 timeframe. From there, we'll work with our partners and stakeholders to prioritize improvements for the implementation and develop funding strategies. And that ends my report about the trail visioning. Does anybody have any questions?
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you. A few years ago, there was a, probably maybe five years ago now, there was a, a couple issues on the trail, and, and I thought we partnered with the City of St. Pete to put some cameras, and is that, am I remembering that correct?
You are.
And did, is that, they still exist there, and did we expand it to other cities? Other cities would do that, or, or is it just in that one spot still?
Um, I, I, I believe only St. Petersburg has the cameras in them.
Okay. All right. Was that something that, when they talk about safety, is that what they're thinking about? Lighting, safe, cameras, or?
Um, beyond that, it's also safety for like cross, crossing the roadways and, and coming in contact with other people.
Okay.
Commissioner Seal.
You might be muted?
Yeah, we can't hear you, Commissioner Seal, if you're speaking. Are you there? Still can't hear you. All right, guys in the back, if you can see if she's connected, or we'll continue the discussion here and try to get her back in. Yeah, so, so when you talk about a visioning document, are you talking about beyond the plan that's in place, expanding that potentially? When you talk about local trail connections, are we talking about from businesses to trail? Are we talking about additional trails connecting with trails? Or what, what's the connection piece here, the local trail connections?
Okay, it's, it's more connection with our partners, because the, the local trails are going to be usually our municipalities, connecting the spokes to the wheel of our, of our Pennels loop.
Okay.
The, the, the visioning is, is anything you can think of, because, I mean, and we have lots of, of, of questions that are out there. Some people would like to have more drinking fountains, some people would like to have more streetlights. So it could be anything that you could possibly think of with the trail, maybe something you saw in a different community that you would like to see here, and what things make visitors choose Pennels County for their trail to come to, to bike.
Yeah, I think there was an effort, it seems like, several years ago, where they were talking about trying to bring consistency to school crossing areas, you know, so that when you were in a, going through a school crossing anywhere in the county, that they were similar, so that when you, when you're out of your neighborhood, your own neighborhood, that you expected the same thing, and people. So I, I think about the trail, and I think about like consistency and safety being the biggest issues that we have. So sometimes you go through areas where it's always stops, sometimes you go where you have a light preemption, like you do at Skinner Boulevard, that automatically goes off, you don't have to hit anything. And then you go through all, through the downtown, and there's multiple cross-sections where it's an always stop, and yet, I've seen cars go right through the intersection, you know, not even stopping. So they didn't either, they didn't see it, so we either, you know, we don't have enough, we either have too much noise when you come, when you're approaching it, they're not focusing, or the, 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 the street, you know, the street painting itself isn't bright enough, or, I don't know what it is, but, you know, so then you get down to Sunset Point, and it's just a trail stopping, it's no stopping going the other way, and you have a button to push if you want to do it. So there's a, there's really inconsistency, and, and you understand that to some degree, because the streets are different. And so I, I, I think as we look at the, you know, that visioning document and developing an app where people can understand that, bicyclists especially, and it seems like we're having more and more motorized vehicles on the trail, which is another component of the visioning document, I'd certainly like to see that as a part of it. Did you get any feedback from residents?
Very much.
On that expansion, or concern about it, or more, wanting more of it?
Oh, yes, we, we, we have pages and pages of comments. We did ask the 19 questions, but we left plenty of blank spaces, so you could type in anything you wanted, and the motorized vehicles, the electric bicycles were very much mentioned in the survey. I think that the survey is not, our, our vision document isn't so much to make up the rules for the trail, but to mark down what people would like to see, and then we need to go back to our stakeholders, like the Parks Department, to determine what should and shouldn't be added into, to our system. You mentioned the consistency at the trail crossings. That is something that Ford Pennels did about 10 years ago. They did a study on that, and that is something that Mr. Blanton was just talking to me yesterday about, about that there's not the trail consistency at the crossing, crossings.
Yeah, and kind of a guide to the use of the trail. I mean, you know, instead of just going out onto the trail and walking, which most of us do, obviously, walking, biking, whatever, a guide to the trail to make people more aware of the challenges and, um, safety challenges, I guess, that we, that you might encounter. I think we need to do more of that, more education, more, you know?
We, we also need to stress all the people that are using the trail, and how we need to be understanding of everybody and have the courtesy that everyone needs to have their space on the trail. So that is something else that we're looking at doing, is a, actually a trail courtesy campaign.
Yeah. Boy, sometimes you have all the room in the world, and sometimes, you know, it's like, how do you get through the, the maze of people? Commissioner Gerard?
Yeah, I think that could be a component of the wayfinding signs. I think the wayfinding is a great idea. When you publish the document, will we get to see all those comments?
Um, I did not put all of the comments into the report itself. Um, I did not put all of the comments into the report itself. I mean, the report itself is probably an inch and a half, so it probably would be another inch. But that is something that we could possibly document for you so that you can see all the comments, because it's great input that needs to also be given to all of our municipalities, because people would even mention specific locations that need something done.
Right. We probably don't need to see all of it, but maybe some compilation of what the kinds of comments we got. So, talk about lighting. Were we having people mention that they wanted to be able to use the trail at night?
There are some, and there are some that are adamantly opposed to it.
Yeah, I would think that would be dangerous unless it had lighting the whole length of it.
What our stakeholders had mentioned, that maybe only in appropriate areas is necessary, like in the downtown Dunedin, they did light their section of the trail so that it is open in more hours. It also might be important to go ahead and make sure there are streetlights at all of the intersections, because even though somebody is not using the trail at night, they may use the crossing to get from one side of the road to the other.
Hmm, that's true.
Let's try Commissioner Seal, are you there? We're not hearing you, so are you, if you're muted, unmute. Well, that's strike two.
Chair, if she would like to pass along her question later, we can definitely answer it.
Yeah, I understand. It's helpful to have the dialogue. We don't get to do that together very often, so it's nice to be able to share our ideas. So Commissioner Seal, that's, we can't hear you again, so we're going to continue the conversation, and we'll, we'll try again.
Do we know if she's still there?
I don't know. I was asking the guys in the back if she's still on. I don't know if she's still on, or?
Yeah, our folks in the back did some troubleshooting, and she was ready to speak, so I'm not sure what just happened.
Okay. So, again, this is a visioning, a visioning piece that you're putting together. So I think, I think they're really, really important exercises about that next phase. Sometimes it's do less, you know, we've got a great asset there. Sometimes it's just about safety, and sometimes it's about business expansion. I know we had the conversation a few weeks ago about some risk issues with businesses connecting to the trail. And so, I mean, I know we're working through that, but I've had so many businesses just, you know, hey, we'd just like to be able to connect to the trail a little better. We're connecting well this way, so connect this way a little more. But, well, just trying to, you know, think through the different aspects of the trail. She's good?
Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Seal, we'll try you again. All right. I am an umpire in baseball. We have two strikes on you, so we're going to continue trying here. Are you there? Still can't hear you. Okay. Well, we will, if you're, if you can hear us, we'll take your, we're going to go into the next piece here in just a minute. And if you could connect during that next piece and ask your question here, we'll bring Joan back up. Are you going to be up here for the next piece, too?
Yes, I'm here for the next one, too.
Okay. So we may have to go back to this presentation. Any other questions from the commissioners here on the visioning piece? Okay. All right. We'll move on to the, to the last update you have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, the next project update is about the Duke Energy Trail South Gap. First, a little background on the Pinellas Trail Loop and how this project fits into the overall program. The Pinellas Trail Loop concept was developed in the 1980s and 90s to provide a continuous 25-mile multi-use path encircling Pinellas County. The west side of the loop was built in the 1990s along an abandoned rail corridor. The long-term concept for the east side of the loop was to use the utilities corridor. What you see in blue on the map are parts of the loop that have been completed. The blue dash in the countryside area is currently under construction. The yellow lines are the remaining segments that need to be completed. The red oval you see is what we call the South Loop Gap and the project we are currently working on. The Pinellas Trail Loop was envisioned to be the backbone for this type of facility, where cities can connect their local trail system into the loop to provide a broad connected network. This project is a four-mile future section from 126th Avenue North at the southern end to Haynes Bayshore Road at the northern end. The Duke Energy Trail is already constructed north from Haynes Bayshore Road. Most of this project runs along the Duke Energy Corridor. The project is split into four segments, of which two segments have different alignments. The segment between Olmerton Road and 142nd has two alternatives, and the segment between Whitney Road and Haynes Bayshore has four alternatives. The evaluation process of the different alignments is underway, including roadway crossings, Duke Energy coordination, stakeholder input with the cities of Largo and Pinellas Park and Forward Pinellas, and reviewing with the public. These four segments and all the alternatives were shown and discussed at a virtual public meeting last month. The current public survey will be open through June the 12th, where the public can comment on the alignments. The project information, recording of the meeting, and the public survey can be found on the project website, www.pineliscounty.org/southgap. The next steps will be to summarize the public comments and update the alternatives based on the feedback. The public comments will be made available shortly after the survey closes. The next public engagement is tentatively planned for this summer, and will include both onsite meetings associated with certain alignments, as well as another virtual meeting. When the preferred alternatives are, when the preferred alignments are determined and the easements obtained, we will start design in fiscal year 21, 22, and construction in fiscal year 23, 24. We will be receiving funding assistance from FDOT for construction for all four segments, and additionally, for the design of the segment between 126th Avenue North and Olmerton Road. Funding from DOT is approximately $8.5 million. That concludes my report about the South Gap. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Seal is supposed to be ready.
Yeah, I have one, and then we'll try Commissioner Seal here in a minute. Just, we had a lot of discussion at the recent Forward Pinellas meeting on bridges, crossing major roads, and there obviously does not, there's no policy in place right now to build them as we go. So we're expanding our trail system, which is great, but we are leaving, I think, areas behind us that don't have the safety. And that, again, back to your survey that you took, one of the concerns is safety. And so when you come down that gap in countryside, and you come to what's probably equal to an eight-lane road, and you're crossing that road, now there's going to be a light, there's going to be a lot of concern about safety. So we're moving the trail on, we keep advancing, and we're not taking care of that. And we got into a lot of discussion about county staff giving priorities to MPO in their discussions about, well, the countryside is a lower priority, you know, and we had a lot of discussion about that very issue. So the only thing, you know, I want to have this loop in place, but I don't think we should do it at the expense of safety. And these major road crossings are critical. So if we're starting to talk about three different road crossings and trying to, trying to compare which one's more important than the other, then maybe we've advanced too fast. So I just, just in the back of your mind, we need to find some funding for these major road crossings before, in my mind, I just, one person's opinion. But Commissioner Seal, are you there?
Commissioner Eggers, she had done some-
Did that work?
Ah, there you are. I just, we just were about to, you know, turn you off there. So, yeah, you're-
I know. Everybody's been kind enough to text me and try to figure out how to connect me. I signed in as a panelist. I've done everything that I can possibly do. But I mainly just had questions back at Belcher Road.
Okay.
Although, you know, I echo your concerns about the Duke Energy Trail and, you know, making sure that we properly plan the segments this time and not start construction before we really have figured out all the public input and, and, you know, so that, so that we can proceed with full public knowledge.
Did you want to, did you have any other comments about the Trail South Gap, or did you want to go, or the visioning piece of the trail, or did you want to go back to the intersection?
Um, well, did you hear what I just said about the South Loop Trail?
Yeah, I did. I did. I didn't know if you were, are you looking for a comment from staff on that?
No, just, that's my comment, plus also, thank you for really working with me. I just, honestly, you don't want to catch this. Belcher Road at Gulf to Bay. So what is the staff's preferred alternative? I guess that's what I didn't gather, or are they still deciding?
Yeah, I don't know that staff has their recommendation yet.
No, we do not have a recommendation for the intersection of Belcher and State Route 60. We're waiting until the consultant gets all of the different requirements for the PD knee study before a preferred alternative is selected. We did have several more alternatives, and it's been pared down to four. So we are down to those four.
Okay, great. Well, I echo the concerns about the Michigan U-turn. With as many tourists as we have to Pinellas County, as I said when we first got that presentation, that if you were going to do every intersection that way on Gulf to Bay, it would be one thing so that people knew what, how to travel it. But if you only do one intersection, it's going to be totally confusing.
Yeah. Again, I think, I think some of that, some of the same idea about consistency as you travel through corridors, whether you're on the trail, whether you're on the roads, whether you're trying to cross eight-lane highways on the trail, you know, you're trying to have some consistency, you know, that's what residents kind of expect. So, yeah, I appreciate your comment on that. Did you have any other?
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
No, but thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Okay. So back to the, to the Duke Energy Trail or South, Trail South Gap?
South Gap.
Any, any other questions on that for now? Okay. So, so to my comment about priorities of bridges, I just, I just need to know, have a better understanding of, not today, but I just have, need to have a better understanding how you're determining that, and why we're trying, why we feel, I mean, I understand the push to connect, but I just, I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that other piece of, of the safety piece. Because I do think that we are, I think we're getting out ahead of ourselves, and we're finding these gaps that need funding, and we're not coming up with the funding. At least, I haven't heard anybody identifying penny money for this. So we're out trying to get money for it. And then, well, you're only going to get one of them. In the next seven years, we may have, I think it was six or seven years before that north loop that's now almost finished, or not almost, because there's still some pieces, but it's ready to go. And yet, we may be seven years before we get a bridge there. And we're still trying to develop, design, construct places with commitments to bridges that aren't even in place yet. So I just think we need to have that dialogue, continue to have that dialogue, so.
Okay. We can take care of it. Thank you, Chair.
Just my thoughts. Okay. Well, thank you, Joan, for all the updates.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. We are left with Lourdes and the agenda briefing.
All right, thank you. And this is for next Tuesday's, June 8th, meeting. And first, we will have under Presentations and Awards Pride Month Proclamation, and a partner presentation on Hurricane season kickoff by Kathy Perkins. Under Public Hearings, we have two. The first one is a City of St. Petersburg Countywide Map Plan Amendment from public, semi-public, and residential low-medium to residential medium and residential low-medium. It's 4.37 acres, more or less, located at 635 64th Street South. And this is an affordable housing project that the city had already approved. It's a good project, you know, affordable housing, very much needed. It's serving the elderly, and it's under 60% AMI. And per the developer, the Grace Church site is planned at an 85-unit elderly development.
Yeah, Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just wanted to make sure I heard that right. It's 60%? What's the number for AMI?
It's under 60%.
Completely? The entire?
It was 33, I believe, to 60%.
But I mean, the number, the 85 units, all 85 units would?
That was my understanding, yeah.
Okay. And then, I know there was some legal back and forth with the neighborhood and the city. All of that's been squared away. Do we know?
I wasn't sure if Jewel was, it looks like it.
I'll be taking a look at some of the issues raised. I know, at least in, at least one of the emails forwarded to me, many of the issues raised were more relevant to the city action taken at the city level. However, they did raise some issues in regard to policies in your countywide plan, so I'll be taking a look at those prior to Tuesday.
But, and that's important, but also, like, I know there was, I thought there was a lawsuit, and I just wanted to, if there's not been a lawsuit, then I'd take it. I thought there was a lawsuit against the city, and I didn't know if that was settled, or if that was-
What there, I apologize for interrupting. What there was, that I was actually reading it, that are in some of your backup materials provided as part of this case, and I do need to finish reading through it, it appears that a coalition, I'll call it, of residents did take advantage of a process that's set forth in state statutes in regard to zoning and land use cases, and they went through an administrative hearing with the Division of Administrative Hearings. That opinion did support the city's action taken in regard, and then, of course, the city adopted the changes that are now before you, of course, only as to the countywide plan. But that's most likely, I assume, what you're referring to, Commissioner. And like I said, I'm going to be reading through all those things and in a better position to advise you on Tuesday. I suspect that's what you're referring to, though.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. And the, I'm sorry, you said senior, what's, what is senior? Is that 55? Is that 65? What's, do we know?
No, we can get that for you. I just have that at seniors, 85 minutes.
It's not 50.
Anyway, if we could get that, that would be helpful.
Okay, and the next is actually to be withdrawn. The City of St. Pete asked us to withdraw that. This was an old industrial site that you heard about, came to the commission, I believe, back in April. And after that meeting, the developer decided to withdraw it from the agenda, which is unfortunate. It was going to be the affordable housing complex as well. So-
Is that permanently withdrawn, or are they reworking?
This was the sports complex.
Yes, with the lagoon also. It was just withdrawn.
Okay.
I don't know that they're continuing to work on it.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Flowers?
I'm sorry for going back. I was trying to get your attention regarding the countywide planning authority issue for the affordable housing component in the Bear Creek area with the city. When we have this item come before us, can we have, I know staff will probably do it, but can we have a pretty thorough presentation, especially as it relates to affordable housing being one of our priorities? A number of emails that I read that were sent really focused on, we don't want affordable or low-income housing in our community. And, you know, a part of what we're trying to do, I think, not just the county, but all cities, is to really address the need for low-income housing. And I know that this has been an issue before, when the city tried to work with the developer to develop- to develop this property, and then they backed away, and now they have another person, but I'd just like a good thorough presentation presented about our process and what our goal and objectives are as it relates to providing low to moderate affordable and workforce housing when that piece comes, please.
Okay, we will have that for you on Tuesday.
Yeah, and I think including in that, maybe, I think we've always already talked about it, but how our goal is, in many cases, is to have that mixed development, so that it's not, it's not all 30% and under, 60% and under, but it's mixed in with market rate as well, so that, you know, communities, whatever the in-my-backyard community pushback, we hear that all the time now. So, yeah, Commissioner Gerard, you had comments?
Yeah, I think it might be helpful, too, to look at what, particularly if it's 100% senior, like, you know, what's the average social security payment, and how does that compare to poverty rate, because it's pretty low? You know, what are some examples of senior affordable housing? Because I think we are going to get some resistance. I mean, there's a beautiful one right over by the state building at Olmerton and 113th. It's beautiful. I mean, and they stay that way, because people stay there. So if there's a way to do that, that would be, that would be nice, too, particularly if we're recommending approval, which I assume we are. That might be a big assumption, but.
Anything else on that?
Okay, so moving on to item number five, citizens to be heard. Item number six, vouchers and bills to be paid. Seven, reports received for filing. And under the county administrator, continuing on here, under utilities, number eight, there's an award to bid to Polydine, Inc. for wastewater polymers, and the recommendation is to approve the rejection of bids from NALCO Company and Fort Bend Services. They were non-responsive to the bid, and approve the award of bid and execution of the agreement with Polydine for wastewater polymers. This is a $2.6 million project for five years. Number nine, utilities as well, award bid to Instrument Specialties, Inc. for Simon's Variable Frequency Drives, replacement parts, maintenance, and repairs for the utilities department. And first is to reject the bid received from Simon's Industry as a non-responsive for meeting the bid requirements, and then to award the bid to Instrument Specialties, Inc. for Simon's Variable Frequency Drives. This is a five-year, $1.3 million project.
So just different groups within the same company? Is that, it seems like it's the same, same business? Okay.
Yeah, I was worried it was both the same name, but one is to reject, and then the other one's to approve.
Yeah, okay, well, maybe we just get clarification on that. Thank you.
And number 10, countywide plan map adjustment submitted by the City of Clearwater. This is to accept the countywide plan map adjustment, again, submitted by Clearwater. It includes approximately 1.19 acres of preservation, and it adjusts approximately 2.2 acres, resulting in an increase of 1.1 for designated preservation. Ford Pinellas and the Planners Advisory Committee each voted unanimously to recommend this adjustment. Okay, and moving on to the regular agenda, under item number 11, Housing and Community Development. This is historic preservation, add velorum tax exemptions for five recently renovated historic properties located in St. Pete, and they are each listed there. The five properties made some significant improvements, and they would qualify for 10 years of tax exemptions. Moving on to number 12, Human Services. This is for the 2020 Edward Brine Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, and this is a pass-through grant from the Department of Justice. We have seven projects that the Substance Abuse Advisory Board, the SOB, has approved, and they are listed there on the following page. Number 13, very excited about this one. This is our KPMG Behavioral Health Consulting. It's the Third Amendment with KPMG. As you know, recently Barry, myself, and Karen met with you one-on-one and went through this with you, so we're going to be bringing that for your review and approval on Tuesday. That is for $1.1 million, which we had set aside. This is something we, you know, we had always planned, this is basically Phase Three, so we've, you know, started the discussions with them to bring this to you on Tuesday. Again, $1.1 million, and the project we expect would be for 44 weeks. And that is to do the coordinated access model design to help with the request for proposal, as we expect to be putting this out, to review and analyze the vendor responses, and then to help implement the project. Next, Management and Budget, item number 14. It's a ratification of the acceptance of the American Rental Federal Assistance or Stimulus Funds for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And then number two is to authorize the county administrator to accept the ARPA Fiscal Recovery Funds of, our county allocation is $189-plus million. And this also delegates Barry to have future authority to accept this money.
And will there be a lot of in-depth conversation as to the use of these funds?
Yes, I know, and I know Bill's here in the room.
Bill's saying no, so, so we just get 189 million, we have no opportunity to talk about it?
Good morning, Commissioners. At this time, we're not prepared to engage in that conversation.
Oh, okay.
We have until December 31st of 2024, so three years, three and a half years from now to obligate the funds, and then until 2026, so five and a half years from now, to actually expend the funds. And we're just now starting to get familiar with what the guidance is from Treasury in terms of what's an allowable use, what's not allowable use, what the strategies are that we might want to employ, and at this point, we're just not ready to have the conversation about exactly what our intended uses would be.
Okay.
But we will be having that conversation, it will be a robust conversation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gerard?
Will you be able to just give us a broad idea of what we know about what the allocations can be used for?
Yeah, generally, there are four specific areas that are enumerated in the staff report that have been provided through the legislation. One of them is to, for economic recovery, one of them is for continued public health response, mitigation and recovery, one of them is lost revenue recovery, and then the last one is equity-based, in terms of communities that have been historically underserved, and trying to address that through these funds as well.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to repeat that next week.
No problem, happy to do so.
Okay, thanks.
So, a lot, a lot more to come, and there will be opportunities for discussion later.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you, Bill. Anything else? Commissioner Seal, are you still there?
I am.
Okay, great, just want to make sure. Go ahead, Lourdes.
Bill worried me when he shook his head no, because, it's just no for today.
Well, I was.
Okay. So next, number 15, Safety and Emergency Services. This is a certification of a public convenience and necessity for the helicopter ambulance service for Pinellas County, and the recommendation is to approve and issue COPCN for Johns Hopkins All Children's Hospital with Medtrans Florida. Next, number 16, it's a business and technology, it's an agreement with Insight Public Sector to purchase technology products and services requested by BTS. It's an approval and execution of the agreement with that company to purchase the items, and it's for 24 months, and the approval amount is $950,000. Okay, the next one is Emergency Medical Services Authority, number 17, also COPCN for non-medical wheelchair transport and stretcher van providers. Their certification currently expires on June 30th, and we have 15 firms that have renewed their application. Next item, Human Services, and I believe Kimberly Crum will be here to discuss that, and this is to increase the upset limit to the agreement with United Healthcare Services for requirements of employees' assistance and managed behavioral programs. There's been a lot more use of this, so basically, they need some extra funding. You know, it's been a tough year, as you all know, so that's what that's for. Next, we have Jewel.
Under number 19, this is a confidential settlement that I'll be contacting each of you about to discuss. I know I've already been able to speak with a couple of you, if you have time today after the meeting, I can certainly talk with you, but if not, I will be reaching out to you prior to Tuesday's meeting.
Okay. Lourdes, back on the HR, number 18, so we're saying that the award, the original award was for 1.1 million, and we're looking for an additional? Okay, all right, so, I got you, for an average expenditure of 700 for the two years, I'm assuming, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And under item number 20, this again is sort of the placeholder that we've had in place for redistricting, should you all have any questions?
Okay.
And number 21, county administrator reports, I don't have anything at this time. You know, Barry will be here on Tuesday, and then county commission, new business, and that wraps up the agenda briefing.
Okay. Anything from the commissioners? I see that we added back that South CRA Advisory Committee, again, we'll take a look at that one. Other than that, I don't see anything else. So it's only 10 till 11. Great.
Good job.
We have, yeah, how about that?
I can leave early then.
So, all right, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.